Good evening. We're going to go ahead and start this wonderful city council meeting today. And I'm glad to have everyone here. Appreciate you coming to support your city. But we welcome you here today. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the left of me over here on the podium rail. Or when you came in through the front door, there was some out there. Please give your card to the city clerk when I call upon you, request that you speak. And let your comments know we're in three minutes. That would be beneficial to us. And thank you for not avoiding any repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance about open meeting law?
Yes, Mayor, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have invocation by a great friend of ours community, Pastor Gerald Mason, from the Vegas View Church of God in Christ. Following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Thank you for life itself, for the measures of health. We need to fulfill our callings. And for the friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for the loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scripture, Lord, you said, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray this evening for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particularly for the assembled councils. I imagine that you would graciously grant them wisdom this afternoon to govern, amend the conflict and interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of this city, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their hearts, in their lives, and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them and us today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would be a benefit those who live in this great city of North Las Vegas. Is this I pray this afternoon in the blessed name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Pastor Mason, before you leave, could you come up to the dice one more second? I just want to take a minute with you. Are you still working with the homeless down there and feeding them once a week? And what is going on in that little church of yours?
Well, each week since the pandemic came in, we've been working in unison with the Three Square. On Friday afternoon during the morning, they deliver an abundance of food. And we have about 15 or 20, sometimes 30 individuals that come down and offload the trucks, stock it in our food bank area. Then early on Saturday morning, about 6:30, they return. And we use our parking lot to set up as a bank. We use shopping carts and what have you, and we load food up. And every Saturday morning since about May, well, since the pandemic, since May, we've been doing a drive-through. And this is every Saturday morning. We usually take off of that. And we feed anywhere from 100 to 150 families every Saturday. It is in my heart to expand what we're doing and doing the week to get additional food. For the past couple of weeks, we have been going to the various senior citizen living establishment and sharing our food with them. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go to another place.
No, this is your moment. I want to brag about you. I just want to let you know, his church is down between Jerry's Nugget and the Couplet on Lake Mead. And Isaac, I think that's your district right across where you lived. So go ahead.
We have five acres of land next to Nevada Partners. It was really established by the founder of our church, Claude Parson, who was a school administrator. After he passed away, I became the pastor. It's been our vision for that land to be used primarily at that time to establish a larger church. But we have a vision now to do something for the community, to use that land for housing, to use it for establish a business section there where housing can be individuals in the neighborhood probably could partner with Nevada Partners. And for the homeless to be trained and be useful in the community together. But we have one big problem. It's a five-letter word. It begins with M and ends with Y. M-O-N-E-Y. We've been established as a congregation here in North Las Vegas since 1965. And we've been constant in some of the things that we're saying. We have a computer lab at our church. It is our interest for in this neighborhood to help the children that have been out of school with the pandemic that doesn't have Wi-Fi. We have Wi-Fi there. This is all a vision of being community involved in our ministry. And again, the biggest issue that we have. And we're endeavoring, if we can, to work with North Las Vegas and establishing great things that we can do to enhance the North Las Vegas community.
Thank you. Maybe another interesting tidbit would be your career, and you were the first of something?
20 years, 25 years ago. Well, let's go back a little bit further. I'm a native Las Vagan. And in about 11 days, I will have spent three quarters of a century in the Las Vegas Valley. And I was one of the first African-American ironworkers in the community. And I got to the point in my life where I can no longer be the muscle man. I needed to be the brain man. And I was very successful in becoming one of the first African-American combination, ICBO combination residential inspectors. And I retired about five years from Clark County Building Department.
Thank you very much. I wanted people to realize what a flag you've stuck in the ground. And your wonderful daughter, who I know you're, she's the heartbeat of your church. Tell her hello, too.
Okay, I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're a great, North Las Vagan. Appreciate you. Moving on to council items, Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm happy to say we're going to be following the tradition. We had a, Councilman Black had a wonderful pool party there with Commissioner Kirkpatrick at Silver Mesa a couple of weeks ago. And we're going to be continuing this, this idea with a summer pool party at the Petitty Pool at Jim Bridger, our alma mater there, their mayor. It'll be this Saturday, August 21st, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And of course, we invite the public to come and enjoy some free food, music, and games. The Southern Nevada Health Center is also going to be there at the event with a healthcare provider to conduct free COVID tests and vaccinations. There'll be HPV immunizations as well as hypertension and diabetes screenings. And then we're still working diligently here with some community partners. For those of you who are not aware, you know, we have a fantastic amenity here. And we're going to be having the very, the official Grito de Dolores, the official one for the entire valley on September 15th from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Here, just outside in Liberty Park. The city of North Vegas will celebrate this Grito de Dolores, which is, of course, the start of Hispanic Heritage Month with the Mexican Independence Day kickoff. And it's going to be a free community event. Again, it'll be in front of City Hall. We're going to have some name entertainers, interactive booths, free, some freebies, resources, kids' area, and more. And again, this will be to kickoff Hispanic Heritage Month. And Mayor, last night, I was walking my dog over at Craig Ranch Park when, I didn't go in, of course, but I noted that we had legendary hip-hop performers Cypress Hill. And I just wanted to thank, you know, Cypress Hill for coming. I think Craig Ranch is a fantastic amenity to bring entertainment into our community. And I wanted to definitely thank our team there at Craig Ranch Park that made it happen. And definitely, I'm not going to miss the next Cypress Hill concert, especially if they let me come in with my dogs.
Thank you. Great report. Councilman Churchill, Mayor Pro Tem, I mean.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got back in town the other night. Was spending some time with my co-chair from our nonprofit in California, going over some memorials out there and also last-minute plans for our October 16th event at Craig Ranch Regional Park. So far, you know, it's still a go. It's almost day-to-day with this COVID thing. But right now, our event will be on Saturday, October 16th, beginning at 10:30 through 4:00. And if you'd like more details, you could please visit NLV Events with the number four, military.org. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. As Councilman Barone stated, I had a really awesome back-to-school pool party at Silver Mesa Rec Center a few Saturdays ago. I just wanted to express my appreciation to our awesome city staff, particularly Rizelle and Nancy, and also the Parks and Rec staff for making the rec center look awesome. We had some really great participation from the Health District doing COVID testing and vaccines. We did dental screenings for the children. Commissioner Kirkpatrick was my partner there, and she scooped up hundreds of snow cones. We had over 600 people come. It was a great family event with lots of food fun, gave away some awesome BMX bikes. And the folks that came had a really great time. So thanks to our amazing team for making that happen.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Goines-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I ended my day yesterday attending two awesome events. And the first one was held at Ty's Place. It's a safe place for teens. And it's on Centennial and Commerce. And it's named in honor of late Assemblywoman, Assemblyman Tyrone Thompson. And their programs through Tulips, which is for teen girls and gentlemen by choice and behavior services. And they were just telling about all the great free programs that they offer there and always looking for mentors. So if that's something that anyone is interested in, please contact Ty's Place. Another great event last night was at our Area Command for North Las Vegas Police with the Community Oriented Policing Department. And they held a meet and greet last night for the faith-based leaders. And it's about launching, rebuilding every city around peace or recap program. And the goal of this program is just to assist victims of crime in various ways, offer emotional and support, emotional support. Some people may just need a hug, or some people just need a shoulder to cry on. But I'm really happy that we are launching this program. And if you know anyone who wants to participate in that program, I know they'll be starting training pretty soon. So it's a pretty phenomenal program. And then this morning started my day pretty excited. Myself, Assistant Manager Dellen Goldberg and Econ William Legere, we went to tour the Just One Project. It's one of Nevada's largest mobile markets where they give back to the community in so many ways, of course, donating food. And the one thing I like about this program is there's not so many qualifiers. If you're hungry, if you have a need, they're going to make sure it happens. And they're launching a youth program to assist youth in various areas, emotional support, their educational goals, just all kinds of support services there. And so it's a great food bank. And they have one location here in North Las Vegas that they do monthly at Canyon Springs High School. And we're just looking to see how we can expand their program into more services in more areas in North Las Vegas.
Thank you. You guys are really involved in your communities, and I think the city really appreciates your leadership. I do, for sure. Moving on to public forum, this is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, which will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed under consent agenda, business or ordinances, final action, now would be that time. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards at this time on post-agenda items?
No, Mayor, no blue cards and no one on the line.
Does anybody from the audience like to come up and take advantage of this? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. We move on to moving on to the agenda.
Mayor, council item one, approve the city council regular meeting agenda of August 18th, 2021. It's our recommendation to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on the agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Want to approve?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council consent agenda consists of items two through 19. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Once again, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates, Madam City Clerk. Oh, I think that's you, isn't it?
Well, so noted, Mayor. Item number 21, are we moving on to public hearings now? Item number 21, ratify the North Las Vegas Teamster Local 14 Supervisor Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 2024.
Thank you. That would be your presentation?
No, Mayor. These three items require that, per NRS, that I read the fiscal impact. If it's okay, I'll just read the fiscal impact for all three agreements. These three contracts are for supervisors, non-supervisors, and admin. Each of them, all three of them have a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024. All three contracts have the same 2021 COLA lump sum payment as agreed, similar to what we've, from the other bargaining groups, namely 2.75% and a $2,500 lump sum. As with the other contracts, the COLA in future years are limited to the CPI index with a cap of three and a floor of two. As part of the agreement, the city will increase the monthly contribution to the Teamsters Healthcare Trust in each year of the agreement. Additionally, there will be changes to the wage scale that increases the top step and reduces the number of steps from 12 to nine over the three-year term of the agreement. Collectively, the three agreements are estimated to cost the city between 15.4 million over three years, 4.2 million the first year, 4.7 in year two, and 6.4 in year three. I just want to thank our HR team for their work on this. And also thank council for providing good direction that we were able to take to all of our bargaining groups and work with them on agreements that recognize what they've done over the last year and really what they've, what they've done for their careers at the city of North Las Vegas, also providing contracts that provide some predictability for employees so they understand what's happening from year to year, that it's not just one year and then we're sitting down again. Also want to thank Teamsters. I know Mr. Ortega is here with some of their board members who, they worked hard to get an agreement together that has, aside from these financial things, there's a lot of things in the agreement that make sense, that are good from a management perspective and are good for our team members. And I know in talking with our team members that the proposal that I essentially took to them in mid-April, which is, forms the basis for this agreement, was overwhelmingly supported by membership of our employees in the city. It was 97% approved of this. So we're excited for this moving forward, that it recognizes, achieves the goals council laid out. And I would just want to thank the HR team and Wilson Engel, who is our chief negotiator on this contract, for the work that he did in the room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up this to public hearing. Mr. Ortega, Johnny, are you here somewhere? Did you want to come up and say anything or you want to wait until we're finished? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Ortega, Chief Shopster for Teamsters Local 14. I just want to commend your committee, city staff, for the hard work that they put into it with your new HR team and what we were able to accomplish with this contract. It has a lot of stability for our members. As you can see, we had a 90% success rate on our vote. And I just want to say thank you to your committee for their hard work. And Teamsters appreciates that.
So I'm going to get this vote, but I want you to stay there because there might be people on the board that want to thank you for the wonderful people you represent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, is there anybody else that'd like to come up and discuss this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So counsel, we're going to take 21, 22, and 23 individually. And so I'm going to ask for a motion on item number 21 at this time?
Actually, Mayor, am I allowed to say something?
Yeah, after we're going to vote, if we vote in the unit. Are you wanting to talk after all the votes? Yeah, that's, I think, when you want to talk. So we'll have Mr. Ortega come back, okay? So is that, can I take a motion from you, Isaac?
Most definitely. I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Item 21 is approved. Moving on to item 22, would anybody like to come up and speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We will now close the public hearing. The chair will take motion on item number 22.
Mayor, I'd like to read that item into the record, please.
Okay.
Item number 22, ratify the North Las Vegas Teamster Local 14 Non-Supervisor Collective Bargaining Agreement for a period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any comments, questions? The chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve item 22.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. And once again, item 23, anybody from the public that'd like to come up and address to council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And the chair will take a motion on item 23. Or counsel, or did you want to read again?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to read into the record and make one change. Item number 23, ratify the North Las Vegas Teamster Local 14 Administrative Collective Bargaining Agreement for a period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. And read into the record for this agenda item, I want to draw attention to the minor change in Exhibit A in the Administrator's Contract. The position the city and the union negotiated to remove out of the admin contract are identified by an asterisk. The principal systems administrator position was not agreed to be removed, so the asterisk should have also been removed. So we'd just like to make that change of removing the asterisk from that position.
Okay. Thank you very much. Once again, I'll open the floor for comments from the floor. And, oh, I have someone for item, oh, this is 24, pardon me. Item 24, so 23, I'll close the public hearing on item 23. The chair will take a motion?
Make a motion with, of course, the city manager's amendment?
Is there, Mayor, if there's comments from council at the time, would this be the time to do those? Would you?
I'm going to, I was going to do it after we get done with these three votes. Any comments or questions? Is that what you're asking?
I would suggest that we make the, any comments during the item before the vote's taken, if that's, be the will of the chair.
Does anybody have anything they want to say at this time? Because I'm going to ask Mr. Ortega to come back up and, you know, get some praise. Seeing none, then we have nothing here. So Scott, did you mention, or?
Yeah, I made the motion, but I'll just go ahead and, it is an area's meeting. I'll follow his lead, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's how we'll do it, yeah. So the motion?
Yeah.
Items approved. Mr. Ortega, I wanted to make sure we voted so you knew everything that was happening up here and you could understand the strength that your leadership has within the city and the team that you brought to negotiate. Well, we'd like to come up and maybe say nice things back to you, you know? So at this time, would anybody in the council like to take a moment? We'll just go down the line.
Yeah. I think the word, the three words that I would use to sum this up is quality of life. And frankly, Mr. Ortega, it is your members who bring quality of life to our city. Whether it's your members who go out and do a cleanup over here in Arrowhead Acres, the people who put together, for instance, that concert last night at Craig Ranch Park, the people who changed the light bulbs there to, so we have the streets lighting up, light it up. Over and over again, I can come up with one example after another where your team, our extended family here, provides top-quality service and will continue to provide top-quality service. And I am very happy that we have this agreement in place that will allow, you know, your team is taking care of our city. We need to take care of them. And I'm very happy, and I did it with much pride, to ensure that your members have economic stability and prosperity so they can go ahead and provide quality of life for their families. Please extend my sincere thanks to your board and my sincere appreciation to all your members. If I could cook for all of them, I most definitely would. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the pleasure of meeting and knowing Johnny and Fred for quite a while, when Larry was with them, always, even when I was on council from '09 to '11. I always considered them to be vital to the operation of the city. And I still feel the same way. When I call in for an issue, whether it be, you know, changing a street light, I'm not going to echo everything that Councilman Barone said, just for time factor. But you've got, you've got the best members out there that are really, you know, that have the best interest of the city at heart. So I appreciate you for all you've done during negotiations because they're not easy. And, you know, please extend that same feeling to Fred as well.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you, Johnny.
And Councilman Black?
Thank you. Mr. Ortega, I've been on the city council for the last four years, and I've had the opportunity to interact with a large number of your members through a wide variety of work that they do across the city. And the thing that's occurring to me tonight, we're expending a great deal of resource, so $15.4 million. But to me, that's a sound investment in a group of diverse individuals that have made a tremendous investment of their own in the city by virtue of their education, their training, their skill set, their backgrounds. We, literally, if you went down the list, the array of trades and professional skillsets and education that's required to do the services that we perform as a city and your members is immense, and it has taken a lifetime of individuals' effort and sweat. So I think this is a reinvestment back in to what you and your team bring to our residents. So I'm thankful for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I'd like just to add my thank you to you, Mr. Ortega, and the board. Teamsters are just an invaluable part of government and of a city. And, you know, you service our constituents, which are our customers, so very well on a daily basis. And I don't want us to ever, ever take that for granted, the work that you all do to make us happy. And so I appreciate you and what you have done. And I know it's been a long journey. Was wondering sometime if there was going to be a light at the end of the tunnel. So the light is here. It's shining brightly. And I want to also say thank you to our internal staff for all the hard work that we've done and that we will continue to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Black?
I just did have one question for our city manager. So as we're celebrating these collaborations with our various collective bargaining groups, you know, we've been through this with our law enforcement, with the fire department, now with our awesome Teamsters. I was just curious, are we, are we done? I mean, I know there, is there just one more remaining with the Police Supervisors Association? Or is there more than that? And where are we at with those?
Yeah, thanks, Councilman. And this is a big one. In fact, last time, Teamsters was before you guys. You couldn't find toilet paper in the grocery stores because we were right in the middle of the blow-up, the pandemic. So it's nice to get this one done. We still, as far as... as far as corrections, I spoke with, with HR just before the meeting, and they've, it seems like they've come to, come to a conclusion on the one outstanding item they had. I spoke with POA leadership this morning about the items they had. At this time, the only thing we have left is Police Supervisors Association. It's a little curious that we're not exactly done. They're a, they're a smaller unit. We believe that the, that the offer that we've made to our other bargaining groups and be consistent with council's direction in treating all employees equal. We're waiting to hear back from them on that. It's my understanding that they'd like to, they feel there's some, some changes that need to be made. So we were a little surprised because we, we thought that that was an agreement that was close to being finished. If you recall, I mean, PSA was a group that, a few years ago, we were at impasse and unable to come to an agreement. And then it resulted in arbitration, which city attorney Moore and her team were able to go to arbitration and represent the city well. And the city won that arbitration, which has created some issues within that contract because there were a number of things that were stripped out by the arbitrator. Some of them are things that create a compression issue between the contracts, POA and PSA, that need to be rectified. It's been management's position that if you sue the residents of North Las Vegas in court or in any kind of judicial proceeding and you lose, that the consolation prize is not that we roll over and give you things back. That's not what we would do with our own. If we, in a personal capacity, were to be victorious in court, we wouldn't turn to the other party and say, yeah, let's take a mulligan here. Let's, let's restore all this. So we do believe that there are, it's been three years since that verdict, that we do need to restore some things in the contract. But we believe that it needs to be done in a prudent way and one that recognizes the challenges that are there from a management and city perspective. And we're hoping to be able to get that concluded with them quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Ortega, just a second on my part. We couldn't run this city without your organization. It wouldn't run without your organization. It really wouldn't. And I know that Larry and Fred have spent a lot of time with you and working with you. And I know that you've put in countless hours in this negotiations, and I respect you for that. But you have some superstars in your organization. You really, really do. And I just wanted to let you know that I can, you can see since we've started our recovery how we've been putting positions back in place and hiring more people and, you know, giving the services, you know. We're not service and solvent anymore like we were about six, eight years ago. So you've got a wonderful group of people that work with you. And we're excited to have the friendship and the love and the respect and the appreciation that the council gets from those good people for our residents, for the council. Thank you very much for being that kind of leader, too.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you all for the comments. And Fred said, let you know he couldn't make it tonight. He's working on school district stuff. So yeah, he's countless hours over there. So thank you again for your comments.
I think we're easier in the school district. We got help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on.
Mayor, counsel, item 24, approve AMP 10, 2021 Mini Storage Facility for Applicant All American Capital Corporation to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change land use designation from employment to neighborhood commercial located at the southeast corner of Simmons Street and El Campo Grande Avenue.
Thank you, Director Jordan. We're going to open up the public hearing now. And I see there's a presentation. Is that you, Mr. Joseph Daggar?
Yes, it is.
That yours? Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Joe Daggar, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. And what we are looking to do here is develop, as it was mentioned, a mini storage facility here on the southeast corner of Simmons and El Campo Grande. I think the document has to be placed here for you to see it.
Yeah, they'll get the overhead on.
And developing the storage facility will require an amendment to the master plan from employment to neighborhood commercial. And just to see in perspective where the site is located, you've got the St. Newman Catholic Church over here on the east. To the, directly to the south, you've got the Children's Center, and there's the Star Nursery down here. And then there's the Albertson's to the east of the, I'm sorry, to the west of the site here. Going on to the site plan, we're proposing three buildings at this site. The first building is in the middle, and it's our largest building. It's 64,000 square feet, and it's a two-story building with 32,000 square feet on each level. This middle building here will have approximately 450 units. The second building are to the east and the west of the site, the second and third building, and they're approximately 2,000 square feet and 6,100 square feet respectively. The second building will have 13 units, and the third building will have 30 units. In addition to that, here to the south of the site, we're going to, will have 10 RV parking spaces with canopies. Access, ingress and egress will be from Simmons, and there will be a gate with security gates to the north and east of the site with visitor parking. We held a neighborhood meeting, and only two neighbors showed up, and no one had any questions or concerns. I know in briefing, a question came about security. And while we won't have security personnel at the site, we will have security cameras throughout the property, and we will have an alarm system throughout the property as well. A question also came up about the hours of operation. So the office hour of, hours of operation are 8 to 5. And then the clients, the customers, will have access to the site between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM. And with that, I'm grateful for your staff's recommendation of approval. I'm grateful for your planning commission's unanimous recommendation of approval. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public. Counselman Black, what is your take on this?
I live about a half a mile from here, so I see this parcel on a very, very regular basis. I, you know, it's, it's a parcel that attracts a lot of trash and debris. Before they put the dirt berm around it, it attracted a lot of illegal parking. And I think it's a commercial site, but it's offset to the north from Ann Road. Even though it is on Simmons, it's not on a hard commercial corner. And so I think the, the applications here are somewhat limited. So I think this is a very appropriate one. I think the, the neighbors, you know, there are four houses to the north that are on El Campo Grande. Outside of that, you have a big Simmons Street to the west, and then the church with the huge parking lot, and then commercial to the south. So I, I think it's a great use of that two-acre parcel. And so I, there are no other comments from my colleagues. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 24.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair has a motion. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, counsel, item 25, approve ZN 15, 2021.
Mayor, was there a blue card on? I, I thought I heard you earlier say there was a blue card on number 24. Is that not accurate?
Was the blue card just, or is there a blue card on 24?
No, just on 24.
Okay.
Yeah. Some people are trying to run our meeting.
Just trying to keep.
Item 26, 27, 28. The city manager wants to make sure you're getting ready because we're getting close. Item number 25.
Mayor, counsel, item 25, approve ZN 15, 2021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3086, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 1.93 plus or minus acres from a CP professional office commercial district to a C1 neighborhood commercial district. ZN 15, 2021, mini storage facility for property located at the southeast corner of Simmons Street and El Campo Grande Avenue and providing for other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph, is this you? Joseph, there is this you again?
It is. And I apologize. I, I only thought I had 24.
Yeah.
I apologize. But I have nothing further to add from my previous presentation. So thank you.
What did you say?
I have nothing. I'm sorry?
That was the same presentation?
Yes, it is.
That's okay, because I didn't see it marked here. Okay, thank you very much.
And my apologies for that.
Counsel, we've had the presentation. Is there anybody from the, I'll open it up for public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counselman Black, once again.
Just as I stated before, I think this is an appropriate use for this commercial parcel. I think it's a service that's in demand in our, in that area. And so I would like to make a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 3086.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? If not, we have a motion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, item 26, approve DA 04, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3088, amending ordinance number 2881, the Insight Park Highlands Development Agreement, DA 04, 2021, Fulton Cove, to modify the development standards, amend permitted commercial uses, add single-family residential uses, change the land use designation from mixed-use commercial to single-family medium and community commercial, and providing for other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Welcome. How are you this evening?
Good, thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of Richmond American Homes. You can see on the aerial, this property is located on both the north and south side of the 215 and Revere Street. There's a lot of history related to this property. There's a separate development agreement that was approved for what's known as in-site development on both of these parcels. Initially, it was a part of the Park Highlands Development Agreement. And you can see it's pretty much surrounded by the villages at Tulie Springs. This is the master plan community of the villages at Tulie Springs. These are the two parcels that are before you. And they have a separate development agreement. What was contemplated on the south side was R4 multifamily senior housing, as well as commercial. And then also on the north, mixed use and commercial. What we have before you today is an amendment to that development agreement to allow single-family homes. For whatever reason, the agreement did not contemplate single-family homes. And Richmond American has under contract about 35 acres on this parcel to the south. And that's what's before you today. This is the site plan that would be allowed as part of the modification to the development agreement. So here's the 215 and Revere. We are holding out a significant amount, a long Revere and a long Darrell for future commercial. So that will remain, oh, if we could just zoom out a little bit, sorry. There we go. So this portion here and this that's blank will be held out for future commercial, which is a pretty significant corner, on the corner of Darrell and Revere. The remainder of it would be single-family homes. We had a neighborhood meeting with the area, and they were generally happy that we were proposing single-family homes as opposed to what's currently allowed with the multifamily senior housing. We have proposed 250 homes, and this is probably the next agenda item. So if I could just include my presentation all together with the two agenda items, this is the requested PUD that's before you. But there's 250 homes, and you have a significant amount of open space when you pull into the community, all of this in green, with gated access from Revere and from Darrell. There's two different product lines that Richmond will be offering with a number of different elevations and sizes of homes that will offer a lot of opportunity for homebuyers. And as you know, we are in desperate need of homes right now, especially entry-level homes in the valley. The rest of the amendments to the development agreement contemplates some amendments to the commercial uses. And your staff did a very great job of negotiating with this property owner to the north, who I'm not representing, but I should put on the record, to allow commercial uses only if they are in conjunction with a grocery store, anchor tenant. And I know that has been something that's been a big priority for the city. And as I mentioned, your staff did a great job of negotiating that into the amendment to the development agreement. So it looks like you should have a grocery store at some point up here, which will benefit everyone in the area, the villages of Tulie Springs, as well as all of the residents in the area, because I know there's a demand for commercial and grocery stores as well. The rest of the development agreement amendments are just kind of cleanup items, so I won't go into too much detail. But we've worked it all out, and staff is recommending approval of that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we would very much appreciate your approval tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for a public hearing. I don't have any blue cards in this. I just have you wanting to talk on the next three items. Is there anybody in the general public that'd like to come up and discuss this? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Counselman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we had our discussion about this, and it's kind of been an ongoing discussion with different builders and developments, developers coming into our city, a lot of homes going up, a lot of commercial, but, you know, kind of seeing the possibility of some food deserts out there, so to speak. And I know my colleagues are concerned about the same. So I'm happy that, at least in this particular case over here, that, you know, staff and yourself work together. For all of those people that will be moving in, whether it be this development over here or the villages, you know, it's so important that they don't have to travel all over the city to be able to, to get their groceries. So, you know, that makes it a lot easier for me, as the council person for the area, to go ahead and approve this. So thank you, and thank you to staff.
Counsel, any other comments or questions? If not, I think, was that your motion?
I'll be happy to make that my motion.
And seeing no other comments, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, counsel, item 27, approve ZN 17, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3087, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 34.6 plus or minus acres from an MPC C2 master plan community, general commercial district to PED planned unit development district, ZN 17, 2021, Fulton Cove, to allow 250 single-family dwellings for property generally located at the southwest corner of Revere Street and Clark County 215, and providing for other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, mayors and councils, Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of Richmond American Homes. I'll just incorporate my last presentation, if that's all right, into this item. And this is the associated zone change for that. We very much appreciate your approval.
Does anybody here like to discuss this with the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Counselman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, I'm happy to make a motion to approve item number 27.
Counsel, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, counsel, item 28, approve VAC 08, 2021, Noble Peak for applicant Richmond American Home of Nevada Incorporated to vacate existing public easement, access easement within a cul-de-sac on Scott Robinson Boulevard in conjunction with development of the property.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the council, Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant Richmond American Homes. If I could just show you on the overhead, this is an approved project that's already been approved off of Scott Robinson Drive. This is the site plan that's approved. What's before you today is really a cleanup item. It's this little red-hatched area. There's a vacation application because there's an existing cul-de-sac that's already dedicated. But we will be utilizing that portion for our entry and dedicating the actual right-of-way on Scott Robinson. So staff recommends approval, and we very much appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Counselor McGoyne Brown? I'm just kidding. I was just, Counselor Churchill, I just got to snap him to the left here. But if you have something, go ahead.
This is just a general question, since Mayor Timmy mentioned food deserts. And maybe Mark, you can answer this. Just when, when we're thinking of grocery stores, you know, throughout North Las Vegas, you know, I know they look at rooftop numbers, income levels. But with all the development, do they ever look at it from the other end where they know it's coming? And, you know, whether it's the big box stores or smaller grocery store prototype, do they say, you know, we know development's happening here, so we can come on in? Because I know they're concerned about sustainability. Could it work both ways? Is, I guess, what's my question.
You know, I'm going to apologize. I did not quite catch all that.
I'm just, when, like, when we're talking about a grocery store chain that wants to come in, or just a grocery store, period. I know they, first thing they want to look at are, you know, number of households or rooftops and, you know, the median income in a particular area. But I'm asking, would they look at it from the other perspective that we are building?
Yes. In my experience in the past, when we used to, years ago, on, under a previous comprehensive plan, we used to ask for a market study when people wanted to change the land use. And one of the things that always came up was number of households. And basically, there's a population, and basically, it was amount of commercial space per capita. And a lot of major anchors, grocery stores, major anchors like that, would always want to know what kind of rooftops are in the area in order to support the type of business that they want to bring into it. And so they always wanted to see the rooftops before they were willing to come in and actually locate a grocery store. Does that answer your question? your question?
Yeah, but I'm just thinking with, like, the developments that are coming aboard, they know that they're coming, but I think they want to see them before, they want to see them before it's just a plan. Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, it does. They do usually ask us for that, you know, because we do keep, like, an active tentative map that Public Works is able to keep up to date, that shows all the types of developments that are coming in, all the subdivisions that the planning commission approves. And so that type of data is available for commercial developers to see what is coming in. And as far as the other aspect of it, Building Department, we do keep a report that is generated every month that shows the type of permits that we're issuing, how many permits are issued, and does include all the single-family, the residential-type permits, and people do regularly ask for that, too, as well, to see what is being developed in the neighborhood, so.
Okay.
Your students, are you satisfied with that? Okay. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that question. Appreciate it. If there's no other questions by any of the councilpeople, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote, counsel. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to business.
Item number twenty-nine, presentation regarding the city of North Las Vegas community input received at the American Rescue Plan Act, listening tours and survey responses. Mayor and council, we have Chief of Staff Gibson, as well as Assistant City Manager Molecchio, that are going to provide a PowerPoint presentation.
Welcome. Nice to see our leadership here today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rebecca Gibson, Chief of Staff, for the record. Myself and Assistant City Manager Molecchio will be presenting, co-presenting information on the American Rescue Plan Act. Assistant City Manager Molecchio will begin the presentation for us, so I'm going to turn the time over to him at this time.
Thank you. I am excited and very proud to be before you today. I want to get you the slide to talk about the grant that has many names, the American Rescue Plan Act. It's called the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Grant. It's also called ARPA. But for us, it's about forty-six-point-three million dollars that we've been provided. It's part of an emergency funding provided by the federal government. And right there, that little section there that talks about what we're doing today and what we're going to be doing throughout the grant, is we have to have a plan that we provide to the community that focuses on equity, that has a community engagement component, which I know the team is very proud of, that Rebecca's going to talk about. We really have to focus in on the evidence and evaluation of each one of the projects that we select, and also evaluate at the end the performance indicators. What did we do? And I think we've discussed some of that with you. Like, when we talk about the use of these funds, what did we, in five years, are we going to be able to look back and say, what did we do with these funds, and did it actually have an impact? So the city's plan for the funds is due August thirty-first, and our biggest thing is we evaluate projects at this time, is whether or not they comply with federal regulations. So again, I said I was very proud, because from the community meetings that we had, the comms team, the council liaisons, Chief of Staff, Government Affairs, everybody just did a wonderful job making sure we were out there, as you, as councilman and mayor always do, listening to the community. So.
Thank you, Alfredo. And as he mentioned, part of the process for the ARPA funds is to engage the community for input, and you all hosted meetings in the community in each ward, along with state delegates, to garner input from our stakeholders and our residents. I'd just like to thank Senator Spearman, Senator Neal, and Assemblywoman Summers Armstrong for their participation, also in these input meetings. The input meetings, as you're aware, were conducted in a town hall format. Participants engaged in dialogue with each of you and completed comment cards on how they would like to see funds spent in their community. Many ideas were presented at these meetings to address things such as homelessness, education, and affordable housing by our residents and our stakeholders. I can tell you that after each town hall that we had, we were given a lot of praise, you were given a lot of praise in the way that you conducted those meetings in a town hall format. It very much felt like, you know, small-town feel, where everybody was able to engage with dialogue with each of you, and really express in an open format how they felt that these funds should be spent. So kudos to you in engaging the community in that way. Another way that we engaged the community was through community surveys. So online surveys were launched in July, in English and in Spanish, on the city's website. To date, we have received well over seven-hundred responses from community members. Education, economic development, and job creation, as well as public health, are among the top responses from the community on where they would like to see funds spent through ARPA. Based on the feedback received from residents, businesses, and community stakeholders in both town halls and in surveys, four buckets have been identified to address these issues that have been brought forth in the community input process, as well as the survey process. And Alfredo will speak a little bit more on how that translates into the buckets that have been identified for funding.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. And so in receiving all this feedback, I'm sorry, somebody needs to take this clicker away from me. In receiving all this feedback, we started to look at what the community was saying, the eligibility of the funds and the different projects that we have, and said, how do we focus them? How do we align them with the city's strategic plan, things that we talk about as a team, and to you, the mayor and the council, as well? And so we identified four buckets that it seemed to be the most important to the community, to be responsive to what their needs were. And so addressing educational disparities was really one of the things that mostly everybody talked about in the surveys and at the town hall meetings. So things like the SNUMA initiative that we have, the initiative to do renovations at the old city hall, are things that we're going to be looking at to bring to you as part of this component. The other thing we heard is assistance to families and businesses and workers. So that direct assistance that we've seen previously through other funds, through, for housing assistance, utility assistance, business assistance, but also small grants as part of, for nonprofits, so they can reach out and help our residents that are in need. And I'm going to talk about this in a couple of seconds here, too, is that we also have to be looking out for what is happening in other, like, at the county level and at the state level, and how their funds are being used, so that we can be strategic about what we do. If there's a program at the county that is a, gives somebody a hundred dollars, or do we give a hundred dollars as well, or is that just, should we be using it in a more strategic way? For water and sewer infrastructure, which is another eligible initiative, and this is responsive to economic development and job creation, is Apex is a project that's a possibility in that category as well. And then the final one here for you today is economic development, infrastructure, and public safety, equipping our public safety personnel, and also doing projects, infrastructure projects, that actually create jobs for the community. And one of the other things we're doing, and this is the final slide, is at N L V cares dot com, we have a place for residents, business owners, people interested in keeping up to date with what is going on with these funds, where we're at in the process. Because you see a lot of different things going on from different communities, from our other sister cities. Where they can sign up for updates from us is at N L V cares dot com. I signed up a few people already today that came my way. And again, like I said earlier, continuing to follow what other, what the county and the state are doing, to make sure that we're being strategic about these funds. And that's all we have.
And if I could point out, Mayor and Council, I do see a couple of folks in the audience that were present at a couple of the input meetings, and I just want to thank them for also being here tonight. Those comment cards that they filled out at the input meetings, they did provide email addresses, and we also signed them up through the N L V cares dot com, so that they can be updated on what's going on with these funds moving forward. And that concludes our presentation.
Could you just please wait for just a second? This is very impressive. I know we've got to the August thirty-first to make decisions. Mr. City Manager, this might be a little bit directed to you, but could we go back to the nine million, the nine million, forty-six-point-three million there? I guess my question is, I get the educational disparities. We have a plan somewhat for that. Water and sewer infrastructure, we have definitely single-shot stuff that'll work for that. The assistance to workers, families, and businesses, what would encompass that? And then, I guess the reason I'm asking, as I look forward from years now, that's kind of my job, transportation's going to be our biggest issue. We'll have eight thousand new people at N L S Air Force Base crowding Craig Road, I mean, you know, all the way to the freeway. We're talking, I'm talking to the Air Force right now with some of our staff to move their general gate to the other side of the Speedway, so we can get people to go over there on the north side, and then down the road here a little bit. I think we need to figure out, Mr. City Manager, how, and maybe Dale, this is a thought for you, how we get that road, the two-fifteen, to go behind Sunrise Mountain and come back from it. We're going to have a lot of trucks. We're going to have a lot of activity going there. What are your thoughts on assistance to workers, families, and businesses? I mean, because transportation's important to these people, but I don't know if it fits in that category.
So, Mayor, just to answer that question directly, and then just...
Yeah, I wanted to learn from you.
A little bit of a higher-level thought. As far as assistance to workers, families, and businesses, we were the only local government in Southern Nevada that was still providing assistance to businesses in the form of direct allocations of CARES dollars, because even though we didn't get our fair share of CARES dollars, we had to fight for the dollars that we did have. Because of your direction to deploy those CARES dollars directly into the community, they weren't absorbed into the general fund, or they weren't absorbed into other funds within the city. Those dollars were still there, working in our community whenever the dollars had been long spent by other entities. So that's kind of, from specific, when you're looking at assistance to workers, families, and businesses, it would be very similar. The recommendations that would come from us to you all would be similar to the types of programs that were available during, that we've already done with CARES dollars. So that, directly, that question. In regards to your comments and thoughts on infrastructure, I completely agree. One of the things that's important about this presentation tonight is this is really, it's compliance with a federal, with a late addition to the bill and late changes to regs to provide an update to the federal government, essentially, a reporting requirement. So that's what we're, essentially, the exercise now, is to comply with the federal government's reporting requirement. Recognizing full well that these buckets, while they're identified, and there looks like there's money allocated to them, that is very much going to change. And one of the things that I would, that I would probably stress from management's perspective is there is an awful lot of infrastructure dollars that are coming in two packages, one package that's moved, there's a very large amount of infrastructure dollars that are in the current budget that's been presented to Congress. And it's our belief that we have a few years in which to use these ARPA funds. We really want to have, be very bright-eyed and understanding with clarity what opportunities there are for us to tap into those federal dollars that are yet to be, have regs written on them and yet to be released, to maximize the dollars that we're going to be able to deploy into the community. So we believe that a lot of the projects that you just mentioned, for example, are projects that are probably shovel or design-ready, that would be more appropriate, or at least have opportunities within those specific infrastructure dollars, and we'd like to tap those first. But first, we need to understand what they are. So even though we contemplated that there will be some C I P-type projects that will come from funding from ARPA, we want to first, I understand what the infrastructure dollars are, which of those dollars we can gain access to, which dollars we successfully work with our delegation to gain access to, and then, once we've done that, then come back and say, okay, we weren't able to get these infrastructure projects funded, and then look towards the ARPA dollars, if that makes sense.
It kind of does. The state's going to get money, we're going to get money. I guess the cost-benefit analysis, what ten years from now might be the most interesting thing to look at, rather than Ivan Paw Airport, that's twenty years away, or, you know, or stuff like that. So you're going to submit this paperwork, it's going to show this, these categories, and then is there a follow-up to that? How does it work on the follow-up, or do you even know yet?
We, yeah, that's a good question. Do we know yet? We know so far what's out there, which there is update periods that we have to provide updates to what's happened. Staff's making sure, and this is something that Rich Easter, Director Easter's been working on, is the ideas, as, the thought is, is the different ideas that have come from the community, that we've received from the surveys, they'll be filtered through first to make sure that they're legal, right, that they're things that actually we can fund with these dollars. Some of the ideas we've already identified are not fundable with the dollars, but they're actually really good ideas. So we'll see if there's another way that that can be done. So I think the direct answer to the question is, is we will comply and provide the federal government what they need, but that our intent and what the direction I've given staff is, let's maximize the dollars that come into our community, and identify dollars that are specific for certain things, and use those dollars for those things. These general dollars that are unallocated, or they're not specific, we need to really look at how to bring you all proposals. And what we intend to do, from staff's perspective, is help bring some of the things that you guys have already decided on. For example, the budget. When the budget's passed, there's five goals that are in the budget. Those are goals that provide direction to staff as far as what council's looking at. We believe it's prudent to look at those goals and make sure that the dollars that are coming in are funding things and priorities that council has already set. We're also going to take some of the things you all have said, that one of the primary goals has been to increase property values for residents of North Las Vegas. That very much will be something that we'll use as a weight to help identify if ideas, suggestions, or projects do that. We also want to make sure we don't repeat what we've learned from the past, which is when we came into the city, there was a fundamental misunderstanding of reoccurring dollars versus non-reoccurring dollars, and making sure that any program or project that's suggested by the community or is forwarded by staff as a recommendation recognizes that non-reoccurring dollars from the federal government are going to be used for it. And if it requires ongoing dollars later on, we have to identify the budget source for that, or this is going to be, you know, if the idea is we're going to go build gardens with this and support the gardens, but when the funds run out, it's not going to be a garden anymore, it's just going to be a wilted patch. So we want to make sure that we're able to, because I think what I've heard from all of you all is these are, these are dollars that are, have the opportunity to be legacy generational projects. And we're hoping that if you, as I said two council meetings ago, if you look at where we, the problems that we had, or the things we were trying to solve pre-pandemic, if ten years from now, we are still looking at those same problems, and we miss the opportunity to dedicate these resources that we did not intend on coming to solve those problems, we completely missed an opportunity. And so we are, as Alfredo said, we're going to identify as best we can what funds from the federal, state, and county are going to go to different programs, and not replicate those, so we can make sure these dollars have the most impact, the greatest impact for the community.
Okay. So I just have one more question. So the ARPA money, forget the future, if it ever comes on the infrastructure, on the ARPA money, do we have to give this report to the county, and they give it to the state, or we just go directly to the federal government?
Yes, so that was one of the changes that we worked hard with, and I think that our delegation recognized. We, the challenge that we had from CARES dollars going through the state, and then them coming here, and the inability for certain people to do math and follow treasury guidance created issues for us, as well as other jurisdictions in the country. Through Congressman Porter's office, through our, through our federal lobbyists, we were able to work to make sure that's not the same with this bill. This is a relationship, a transactional relationship between us and the U.S. Treasury. We will report directly to them. You all have the autonomy as policymakers to determine what best to use these dollars. And Mayor, if I misspoke, it does not mean we will not do capital or infrastructure projects with the ARPA dollars. It's just, we believe it's prudent to first look at the infrastructure dollars that are identified as infrastructure dollars, and make sure that we use those before we tap into these, which might, we might not need to use them for infrastructure. We might be able to find infrastructure dollars other places.
Yes, it, well, it's halfway there. Yes, we're halfway there, you know, in Washington. Very interesting to me to watch you and you young people navigate this city to the future. You're doing a great job for our residents. But I'm going to open up a comment now. Anybody here have a question? Councilwoman going around.
And I'm sure my colleagues, we get a lot of inquiries from nonprofits. And I'm just wondering, under one of these buckets, if we're, we can't fund all the, we can't fund nonprofits, but just to, because they ask for grants or how to find that thing. So could that be expanding the grant-writing process? Or could that be a person to assist to create a database? Or a how-to find those dollars so they can support, because nonprofits are extremely important as well?
So two quick comments on that. First, we're going to be bringing you all, we're not ready to talk publicly about it, a program to maximize resources for nonprofits and businesses in North Las Vegas. Second is last week, I asked the county manager and other city managers to identify a person within their team that is central to the conversation about these dollars, as well as other federal dollars that are coming in. And Rebecca has been, Chief Staff Gibson's been collecting that information. I spoke with her earlier, and the guidance is, is for her to meet weekly and this team to meet weekly. We believe that one of the most important things about nonprofits is nonprofits and the services they provide don't necessarily recognize jurisdictional boundaries. They're, they're providing services for the entire region. And whenever we have these regional nonprofits, whether it be the Salvation Army or Three Square or others, when they're coming to us asking for a request, one of the things I know I'll hear from you all when I bring it is, okay, but how do we know it's North Las Vegas residents? How do we make sure that these dollars are being deployed within our community? So we felt that it was a good idea, and I asked the city, city managers and county manager if we could work together, especially on those requests from regional nonprofits, how we coordinate, so we make sure we're not being wasteful. We make sure that we're targeting our individual communities, but recognizing that everyone's going to say the same thing to a Three Square. Well, how do we know this is going, being deployed in Henderson? How do we know this is in Las Vegas? So our thought is, is what we learned from, from the pandemic, which, in fact, that meeting with the, with the county manager and city managers was put together in response to the pandemic. Our, our desire to make sure that leaders in the community were meeting together. Director Hardy has meetings with the CFOs. We, those regional collaboration between the group were just taking another step to put together a regional group to look at these ARPA funds. And one of the reasons is for nonprofits, to make sure that we're providing what they need and not being wasteful.
Councilman Black.
Thank you. I noticed, of course, that we've broken this out into buckets that align with our city's strategic plan. And fortunately, two of the three top-ranked categories from the community response also align with our strategic plan. Education aligns with bucket number one, and economic development, job creation align with bucket number four. But bucket number, or category or rank, highly-ranked category number three, public health, doesn't appear. And so the health district, the good news is, we don't have to create a city of North Las Vegas Health District, because we have a very capable health district in our region. But the pandemic has really revealed some deficiencies in our public health infrastructure, not just for disease surveillance and communicable disease prevention. That's the big-ticket item with, with the pandemic. But there are other areas in our public health infrastructure that haven't been strategically invested in over time, and they're deficient. And so the health district has been proactive and generated a pretty good strategic plan of their own of how we can regionally enhance public health infrastructure in really meaningful ways throughout our, our entire community. And so what I would ask, it's kind of a short, a last-minute ask, but tomorrow morning, from eight-thirty to ten, is a Southern Nevada Health District Strategic Stakeholder Meeting that's being held via WebEx. And I would ask Mr. City Manager, if we can allocate a small core group of folks, if they're not already invited to tune into that, and I'll provide the link. And so we can look at what the health district is, is proposing, and maybe we look at some of those programs and say, hey, those two programs are very, very relevant to North Las Vegas, and then we can do some strategic investment of the ARPA dollars into the health district to get those services for our community.
Absolutely. I'll identify some staff to participate in that. That's consistent with what we've done through the pandemic. We've looked, whenever Clark County was contracting with a third party in order to provide rental assistance, we recognized, why would we, why would we replicate that? It would be, for us to stand up something that someone else is already doing, you, you have duplication, it's not efficient. So that is completely conforms to what we're, what, what we've been consistently doing. When it comes to that bucket in particular, I think some of the things that, you know, an example is what our firefighters and what FD did during administering vaccines through the community. That required funds. Those funds didn't come from anywhere else other than CARES dollars. If now we're looking at, we're going to have to start doing, deploying more vaccines or doing a third dose, or, we want to make sure that the resources are there in the event that we need to do that. As we, as Mayor Protem discussed, an event that he's having at a park. We want to have community events again. There might be a role that the city has to play in, in, in making sure that we're able to provide those events, whether we're having to purchase masks. Or I, I just, I, it's not, I'm really unsure what we need to do, but there are clearly health needs that we're probably going to have to address and at least have the resources to be able to address them that might be different than, than what's happening on a regional basis. And we want to make sure, and that's kind of what we're seeing from the idea standpoint from the community, but it's well-taken. We'll make sure that we have staff on that, that call tomorrow.
Thanks. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just let me say, for the record, our city manager and your staff do an excellent job of keeping us abreast of what's going on and briefing us on, on everything that we need to know and then some. You know, they give us that ability to, to make intelligent decisions up here. So, you know, that's really the core of where we, we get our decisions from, so we really appreciate that. But I'll be very brief. You mentioned a little while ago about some of the problems we had with CARES dollars. So two questions. The forty-six point three million, is that a hard number?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So we're not going to be having to jump through any hoops to get our allotment this time?
We've already received half of it.
Okay. And I think you already answered the question that we'll just be going directly to the federal government, rather than going through the state or through the county.
Yes, sir. For, for our allotment, we will be going directly through the federal government. But make no mistake, the amount of money that we received is directly for our community. But there were, there are allocations that have been provided to the state that are also designed for our community. And while we're talking millions, they're talking billions. So we are working with the state to make sure that we've identified projects that are, that we, that the state can deploy their dollars for. Because there, there's not just a little state in Nevada somewhere up in Carson City that can go blow a million, a billion and a half dollars. They've got to pass it down to communities, and they have to pass it down to projects. So we are working to make sure that they're aware of our projects. For example, just last week, Director Luke was working with the state on, on funding a project specifically in Apex, a twenty-million-dollar-plus project. So we've been working with the state agencies to make sure that our projects are being considered, which once again goes to the mayor's question about infrastructure. Is there's a lot of moving parts here. There's a lot of dollars that have been dropped into other people's buckets. And we would like to go and make sure that we're working with them, as we, as I mentioned to the treasurer last council meeting, that we're working with the state and their agencies to use those dollars as intended, which is to fund local projects.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, and of course, our Chief of Staff and Assistant City Manager, thank you very much for the presentation. And I'll tell you what, I hate wearing this mask. I, I, but, you know, I, I'm actually going to, I don't know why these things happen, but there's, there is certainly a silver lining in all this. The one thing that COVID did is it exposed every weakness that we had in society. As a society, how we have not invested properly in education, how we have not invested properly in public health, how we've not had, you know, affordable housing invested in. Everywhere, we've been exposed. Hey, you should see my students. I've had the best behaved students I've had probably in the past ten years. Why? Because I think they appreciate us now, you know. I, I think the, the days of teachers being used as babysitters, cheap babysitters, I think those days, you know, people are rethinking that. But getting back to this German question, this is not the federal government making it rain for us. This is an investment that they're putting back into our society. We spent two trillion dollars in Afghanistan. The money that, that's being spent here is an investment. And again, one thing I do agree with the, with the federal government is, there are investors, there are infrastructures that go beyond, although I'm, I'm very much attuned for our roads, our, our power grid, and, and of course, our water. But there's, there are infrastructures that go way beyond this, and we're addressing these. There are people infrastructures that we're going to be investing in. And I, I definitely, you know, applaud your vision and the vision of your team to go ahead and maximize these dollars. You've built up a wonderful relationship. I want to thank publicly here our friends at the, at the County Commission, who have been, they've been partners with us in, in every way we can think of. And they're quite supportive to us. And I really appreciate the, the relationship that you have built with them, with, with our commissioners. And I look forward with how you'll be, with how your team will be working with the state to, again, maximize these dollars. And just looking forward, I, I, I had, this is a one-time shot, and we can't afford to, to mess it up, and we've been very good at working with our resources. And again, I'll be looking forward to seeing just how far we can get, you know. It seems like we've been doing, doing so much with so much with so little for so long. I think the city can do almost anything with nothing. But now you have a fantastic resource, and I just can't wait to see, you know, what we come up with. And again, thank you so very much, and please extend to all of our partners my sincere gratitude. And thanks in advance.
Thank you, Councilman. Just two, two quick observations on that. The first is, you're correct. While the federal government has the ability to warm up printing presses and print money, the reality is these are taxpayer dollars. And that was the position council took when it came to the CARES dollars, is those were federal dollars that had been paid by our small businesses, had been paid by our residents, and now the federal government was releasing those dollars back into the community to make a difference, which is why they were deployed back into the community. They were their dollars. They're not anyone else's dollars. Now, while some of these dollars might not have been paid yet, they will be paid in the future by taxpayers. This bill will come due. And it's very important for our community, which has been traditionally left behind, to make sure that we get those resources back, because the last thing we should be doing is having our residents paying for projects in other jurisdictions, because they will be paying for it over, for the next few decades. And we want to make sure we get those back. The second is, I completely agree with you that COVID has been framing a lot of the conversation of how we're doing things in the city of North Las Vegas. We have not missed the opportunity to learn from COVID. We've not missed the opportunity to understand that it has, just as you said. It has exposed, in my mind, two things. It has exposed leadership. If, if you're not a good leader, COVID exposed you as such. There was nowhere to hide from this. The second thing is that it exposed historical inequalities have existed, and it put them front and center. And I think that that has framed our thoughts as we've looked at these dollars. These dollars are, once again, they're intended for the community's hardest hit, which we're the epicenter. And within the epicenter of North Las Vegas, we have other, other communities that have really been hit very hard. And it's framing the conversation, for example, when we're looking at economic development opportunities in the downtown corridor. I think the last thing that we probably need is more fast food, because fast food was a culprit that ultimately led to health outcomes that made our community, particular communities of color, more susceptible to COVID. And those are things that we have to recognize, we have to use to frame as we, and inform us as we move forward.
Ms. Gibson, do you have anything you'd like to finish up with? I know this is your presentation.
No, Mayor, thank you. I just appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. Myself and Assistant City Manager Malicio were available if there's any questions that come up afterwards.
So after this vote and a signature goes on it, then immediately it goes to the federal government?
Yes, the report will go to the federal government.
Let's just don't miss the date.
Absolutely.
That's very good you've done here. Work. Thank you so much. This was just a presentation, no, no votes needed to be taken. Thirty?
I am thirty, Mayor Council. Pass and adopt Resolution Number 2671, providing for the transfer of the city's 2021 private activity bond volume cap to the Director of the State and Nevada Department of Business and Industry of the State and Nevada for new construction of the signed apartments located at the northwest corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Hamilton Street.
Thank you very much. Chair will take a motion to adopt Resolution 2671? What's that? I don't think, no, there's not a presentation on this.
I just had a quick question. What's the, the dollar value of the private activity bond cap that's being transferred?
Mayor Council, it'd be fourteen million, two hundred thousand and five hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. That's what's proposed to be transferred.
Councilman Brown.
Yeah, Mayor, you know, this actually, it, it looks very humble here, you know, this 2671. It looks very humble, hidden paper, but this is actually a historic night. There's, I, I think that a lot of the public should know. What we've, what we've been working for here is a transformation, but we definitely need a transformation here, as the city manager said, into a community that has been chronically underserved. And what this, what this resolution gives us is a transformation for this entire area. You know, you and I, of course, we grew up in the area. You probably as a kid played in the lot that's across the street. There were Maya Cinemas that I did. We built forts there as a kid, there, you know, jumped our bicycles there on ramps. I know you probably played out there too. And of course, now we have Maya Cinemas there. But what this provides funding for is a fantastic addition to the downtown of Las Vegas. The senior apartments, which will actually be receiving this, are going to offer two hundred and seventy-seven units of upscale mixed-income affordable housing. But wait, there's way more. The community is going to offer amenities such as a fitness center, a business center, club room, swimming pools, playground. And again, it's located right here in the downtown of Las Vegas redevelopment area. Of course, my good friend, the chair there, and I, we've been looking for projects like this. And it's going to make an urban, walkable, mid-rise community. With five stories, it's going to be located adjacent to public transport, to public transit, to a grocery store, actually lots of grocery stores, and many other retail establishments. What this is going to give us is going to give us the tallest residential tower in the city of Las Vegas with five stories. Then it, it sounds kind of like, you know, a little, a little bit, how should I say, humble compared to the rest of our valley. But for this, for us, it's the tallest structure. The senior apartments are going to complement what's already a vibrant and bustling area within our downtown. You know, my council members here, you guys joined me, as we cut the ribbon there at the six-hundred-student Civic Academy that opened up just next door with expansion plans already in the works. And of course, the popular Maya Cinemas is just across the parking lot. Again, I, I keep saying transformative. It's going to be totally transformative. It's going to be a catalyst for future retail, for medical office, and housing developments in downtown Las Vegas. And of course, if you haven't been looking, there's been a need, a desperate need for affordable housing value-wise. The development is going to help to fill the acute shortage of affordable housing units in the area, which is determined but to be needing over thirty thousand units in the next three to five years. And that's in a study that Clark County did. The developer, Rise Residential, and we have, I think, a representative from Rise Residential, is consistently recognized in the top fifty affordable developers in the United States. And as I understand, they've created over eight thousand units. And this represents a fifty-million-dollar investment by the developer into their downtown Las Vegas. Well, I definitely want to develop, I mean, I definitely want to thank the developer. But, you know, Mayor, we have some elite teams. When it comes to the city government, we have some elite teams. And one of our elite teams is our, our small but very, very active economic development team. I want to thank them and all the work that they've, that they brought. And also our community development team. You know, for a while there, it looked like it was not going to work. But our teams for the city were very much committed to making this project happen. The, the two parties who needed to come together, they came together, and I'm really thanking them. I'm thanking our, our good friend, the legendary... I'm thanking our, our good friend, the legendary Motte Suma Esparza, a civil rights leader from the nineteen-sixties, who developed the site. He had the vision to make this happen. And of course, again, I, I, I definitely want to thank Rise for the residential to making this happen. Again, it's, it is a very simple meeting that we're having. It's a historic night. And a few, a few months from now, maybe in the short time, I, I hope to be alive here in the next year or so. When you drive down here, you're going to see these two, five, five-story towers, you know, and it's going to be the new anchor, the new pivot for a downtown walkable community. I, I know how, I'm going to vote on this, and I, I know how, I, I'll be, I'll consider it a great honor to make this motion. I'm really, this is a blessing, I think, not just a, a motion. This is a blessing, I think, that's being delivered to us. And I, if I could put on a cheerleader skirt and get the pom-poms, you probably don't want to see me do that, but I would be rooting for this one. So I'm extremely excited. I guess, I'm sure the public can see this, right? And I'm, I, anyhow, I, I'm really happy that this night has come.
Okay, we'll take that as a motion. Let me ask the council, council, any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, and your motion stands, please cast your vote. Items approved, one hundred percent. Thank you very much. Moving on to appointments.
Item number thirty-one, appoint a citizen representative of the Clark County Community Development Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending September fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Alpert, Jeffrey Alpert, has asked to be reappointed to the Clark County Community Development Advisory Committee. We see no reason why he shouldn't continue to serve in that, so that will be the motion for me. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to city managers' report.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to, I, some of the comments I made during the, the other presentation, I was going to discuss during this report, but I just want to thank Chief of Staff Gibson and Assistant City Manager Malassio for their work and leadership on this. I think that they're, we just have an incredible team, and those two were able to quickly, especially, you know, they, they both just quickly jumped on this when we recognized that we needed to do some reporting, that feedback we wanted to, from you all, was to go out into the community and, and work with the community. And they just were able to put this together. It was a, it's, they had some wonderful, wonderful events, and I look forward to us coming back and reporting with you. They're going to be spending a lot of time working with you all as we refine and figure out how best to change our community with these transformative dollars. So just their leadership and work on this has just been tremendous.
Thank you very much. Very good report. Moving on to second public forum. This is a time for anybody to speak to us on issues that are not on the agenda. Speaker is limited to three minutes. Remember, the council may hear these items, but we can't take any action on it tonight. We'd have to put it on an agenda on the next council meeting. So I have a Mr. Nathan Atkins that would like to approach the council, and then following him, Mr. Johnny Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Nathan Atkins. I live in fourteen twenty-one Arkdoma Avenue over in North Las Vegas. The other day, I was by the Lowe's, yeah, the Lowe's, Fitness, not Fitness, um...
On Losi?
On Losi.
Correct.
The Lowe's Home Supply Store. Clearly, I don't shop much, so. Anyway, I was over there as Somerset, obviously, was getting out of school, the charter school that's over there, and they really don't have any control over the traffic flow of the children leaving. I noticed the, the parents were parking in the lot and crossing through the lot. The children were crossing unsupervised in between the cars. So our kid used to go to Watson overall for commerce, and they did a fantastic job of making sure the kids were safe as they departed from school. So I would just like to suggest that we do something, somebody reach out to Somerset and, and figure it out. I'm aware that there was a tragic accident that happened there last year, so this is obviously an ongoing situation. So if there's something public safety can do, that would be great to protect the kids as they walk through there.
Yes, thank you. And we have put lights up fifteen miles. Now, we've done everything we can, but I do recognize what you're talking about. We don't want it to happen again. So I appreciate you very much coming today, and I guess I leave it up to the city manager to consider with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bell, Mr. Johnny Bell? Welcome, Mr. Bell.
I'm Mr. Deputy Mayor, Eagle City Council. My name is Johnny Bell, eighty-sixty Severn Valley, Las Vegas, Nevada. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, good seeing you. I know you don't remember, you talked to a lot of people, Ms. Brown, but I had a meeting with you, with Mr. Johnson, a couple other people. My name is John Lee Bell, and I told you, I'm, you're the white John Lee, I'm the black John Lee. So we talked, I introduced myself and my background, and I was at a meeting with Mr. Johnson. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to try to take up my, my whole three minutes. I'm going to share a song that I wrote. I'm a professional rapper, turned down a five-million-dollar deal not to talk about negativity. So at the same time, I'm going to do a song called Stop the Violence, and it was written in nineteen ninety. And then I'm going to talk about what I came for, which is a project at Tonopah Park. I've actually been there for two, two months. Actually, I've seen everything going on. Anyway, I don't know, I'm not allowed to take this off, so I'm going to try to rap a little bit. This is called Stop the Violence, and it goes like this. This is a day dedicated to the movement of stop the violence. Ninety-nine-one, it means MC Hope, they're beating with silence. The pain remains, but we're working for a better change. It's time to let out some steam about what I've seen. I'm turning your kids out and not doing a thing. How long with the scope on? How long would it last? Does someone in your family have to pass? We had an outrage. Now we're taking a stand, so stop the violence for the world's sake. How many tears must be shedded? How many lives must be given? Can you stop the violence in this day? If you can stop the violence for just one day, maybe this day could lead to every day. MC Hope's on the microphone, spreading the message that you're not alone in this deadly game called drugs and gangs. But when we're through, we'll take this fame. I'm going to stop there because I got three minutes. But at the same, that song was written in nineteen ninety. I'm going to introduce myself. I have the record of having the first and the only all-rap program in the United States endorsed by a school board right out of San Bernardino County. I grew up in Vegas. I'm a gerson baby, I'm an ex-game member, baby spade, at the same time I left and went to San Bernardino in nineteen, in, when I was sixteen years old. So basically, that's a little bit about me. I belong to fifty organizations before I came here. At the same time, I'm an advocate, I'm a youth advocate, and I'm a homeless advocate. I started on, uh, matter of fact, Foremaster. The care building used to be Jesus's answer. Uh, we are one of the biggest dope dealers in the city. Bishop McIntosh used to run it. Yours truly came in town and became the manager. And that's how I got started and started advocating for the homeless out here. And to make a long story short, it's now, so I was visiting a few homeless people in the park, Tonopah. So at the same time, I said, you know what? There's no water here, there's no bathroom, but at the same time, we started doing what we're doing. And I want to go into all the bathrooms, the cars, the party parties I did, with all the homeless people being pushed all over the place. So at the same time, I just decided, you know, well, I might as well put my stake here in this park. And at the same time, next day, you know, I started getting people telling me that we was doing code enforcement, that I was big. Two days ago, four police officers pulled up, said, oh, we just got complaints that you're the new dope dealer in, in, inside the park. And so at the same time, I was already coming here before I talked to, I think, the assistant manager, and I was told that there was a homeless community liaison. So at the same time, you guys were shooting some, a lot of, what's the word, I don't say, bad fire at somebody who's helping you there already. So I heard about the project. So I heard about that. I'm calling already. I heard about the city council meeting, which I'm coming here now. At the same time, I want to exist and bring my support, bring my organization. I do have a nonprofit organization, been in existence since two thousand and four. And I'm glad that, you know, when you guys brought it up, and at the same time, something's going to be done, because me belong to fifty organizations. And now, and I ain't going to say now, but when I got to Vegas, you know, I cut it down. But at the same time, I have the experience, and at the same time, I've been on numerous boards, San Bernardino County Wide Drug and Gang Task Force, the largest task force in the United States, the Moose Lodge. Those that don't know, you should watch Fred Flintstone. At the same time, that is a real organization, and the only professional rapper in the world that have a letter from the Moose Lodge in my portfolio. So at the same time, I'm here to support. It's good to see you, John. I'm here to do whatever.